Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Here.
Item number two, public comment, items not on this agenda. Any members of the public like to speak to the council? All right, we'll go right onto item three, conduct a study session. Conduct a study session to review the recommended 2013-14 general funds, special revenue funds, and enterprise funds budget.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for joining us again for this second of your annual budget review workshops or study sessions. Tonight it's our intent to build on the discussion that we had last Thursday night by giving you an overview of each of the departmental budgets as they are presented in the budget document that you've had, that you have before you and now hopefully have had at least a short amount of time to review its content. As we indicated at the meeting on last Thursday night, we have a, what I think is an improving platform for the delivery, financial platform for the delivery of all of the necessary city services that our community relies on. And what you'll hear tonight from each of the departments is a little bit more detail about the work program and about any particular financial issues that are impacting or have some relationship to the delivery of the work program that our residents rely on through each of the departments. It's our intent tonight to work, to walk through the departments roughly, not roughly, exactly, in the order that they are presented in the budget document for, just simply out of convenience with no priority or other intent expected. And so it's, with that, our intent is not to repeat what we discussed last Thursday night, but to just move right on. But before we do that, I will stop and ask if there's any follow-up questions that the council might like to open with, given that you've had a little bit of time now to think about the materials that we presented on Thursday night. And once you're ready then we'll dive right in with a presentation about the elected offices and general administration.
Any questions for city managers, staff? All right, you're on.
Great. So with that, you'll, you'll note as we discussed briefly with you last Thursday night, that we've attempted to organize the budget in a manner that both facilitates understanding and is relatively easy to use by organizing around the different operational areas of the city. We tried to minimize the numbers of tabs that are provided in the budget and then simply to focus on bigger picture level organization. So we start with all of the elected offices. Those elected offices consist of the city council and its budget, the city clerk's office, and the city treasurer's office. And although there is a fair amount of detail provided in the budget document, and we're happy to take any questions about any of that detail, we wanted to just point out a couple of the most important issues that are both driving the expenditure program or changes in the expenditure program, as well as what we consider to be the highlights of the work program in those three areas. These are areas that remain relatively consistent from one year to the another. The financial plan remains fairly flat or without a great deal of change. In terms of the work program, however, we have a couple of important items in the city council's arena that we're looking forward to as part of the priorities for the coming year. And first, we discussed briefly with you last Thursday and with the city council back in March, and that is a strategic planning session that will allow the city council to focus in with staff about some of your important priority and policy objectives for the coming year. We've addressed many of those and will be addressing many others of those through the capital budget, but certainly we're looking forward to receiving the city council's guidance on specific interests regarding a number of the issues that you touched upon in March. There are no specific resources at this point highlighted or allocated in the, in the budget document, but we believe that this will be an important opportunity to organize our work program and again to collaborate with the city council. Secondly, in the city council's work program and in your budget is the $10,000 allocation that we've provided for each of the last two years. This will be the third year of the foresightful financial planning anyway, for the delivery of what we look forward to be a year-long celebration of the city's 100th anniversary of its incorporation and its centennial in 2014. All told, those $10,000 incremental, incremental allocations result in a total funding, if you will, right now of $30,000 with another allocation next year. We're right on target obviously with a small but significant amount of money that we hope will allow us to at least initiate some of the things that our committee will be looking forward to producing for the centennial year. The city council also, in March, at your study session, identified an interest to restore and reestablish an initiative that the city frankly has let lapse over the past, it's probably been two to three years now, and that is a volunteer recognition event. In the past, we've held a dinner, we've, I think one year we did a coffee and dessert event, but as I indicated, for the last couple of years, we have let that unfortunately fall by the wayside. While we have continued to benefit from the energetic service and contributions of numbers of volunteers in our community who are appointed to boards and commissions, we have a small allocation in the city council's budget for that event to be restored this year, and we look forward to working with the city council to do that. In the city clerk's budget, and frankly, over the years, the main fluctuation that occurs in this budget is whether or not an election, a municipal election is being conducted. You may remember that two years ago, we budgeted on the advice of the county elections office, an $80,000 amount for the conduct of the municipal election in 2011. We were positively surprised to know, to hear from the county elections office this year that the amount of the election for the coming year, November of 2013, is less, it's just over $50,000. So that amount has been included in the city clerk's budget. Again, that's a every-two-year event and frankly, significantly outside of the city's control about what the amount is and the fact that that happens every other year. And then lastly, in terms of the city clerk's work program, we have developed a follow-through for an item that the city council has discussed a few times in the past, and that is the delivery of a paperless agenda. We are proposing that we use funds that are available in the current year budget to purchase tablets or smart devices of some type, frankly, of the council's own deliberation, what would serve you best. And then to implement the paperless agenda going forward into the 13-14 budget year, there's a very small allocation of $1,800 shown in the city clerk's office budget to cover the cost of data plans, to power those devices and allow us to discontinue, if it is the city council's interest.
The council's budget?
I'm sorry, in the council's budget, I'm sorry. Would allow us to discontinue or scale back significantly on the delivery of paper copies, which again would be done at the option of the city council. And again, we're responding to some guidance and direction that the city council has previously provided and frankly, are a little bit overdue in meeting that interest of the city council and keeping up to date with the state of the art that many of your colleagues in other cities are already utilizing. So with that, our intent is to move away from the elected offices and move on to the general administration unless there are questions or comments.
Yeah, Rick.
On the elected, on the treasurer's, and I only had a comment, not really a question. I just wanted to acknowledge, and so if there was something that was done, under professional services, bank fees and charges went down about $12,000 from last year's budget. So whatever was done or whoever found that savings, kudos.
That is actually the result of a specific action by the bank that we utilize. We, our bank has for about five years, or had been for about five years, been providing lockbox service to the city for utility payments. And so rather than those utility payments that are mailed and rather than those coming directly to the city and city staff processing those payments, they're going to our bank and the bank was directly processing those payments. They stopped offering that service about six months ago, last summer I want to say, I guess longer than that, eight months ago. They stopped offering that service, which results in $12,000 a year reduction in the bank fees. However, that work effort now shifts back to city staff.
So much for that, easy come, easy go. Here, I was trying to compliment John.
That's okay. Through the chair.
Okay.
Thank you. I just have a question for Carol. In your goals, you talk about continuing efforts to reorganize and archive files to make them more accessible. Can you kind of explain for everybody how you're doing that and how far along you're going and when, when the public can look forward to accessing the files?
Well, I had logged all the ordinances and the resolutions for the city, and I had logged them to where they really are not identifiable. So I've gone back in and I'm logging them complete so that they're understandable, so that if somebody calls into our office, we can readily find exactly what they're looking for. Future plans are to scan everything, but that is an additional cost that we have not yet allocated. But once we can scan everything, everything will be accessible to everybody.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Through the chair?
Ken.
I can truly appreciate the fact that we're going to get a strategic planning session in the fall. And I'm assuming that there's going to be a lot of topics. We haven't really discussed what we may discuss. That, a lot of what I've realized by going through this budget is that there's a lot of improvements and a lot of discussion about in-house and what our services are. And I think we, and reacting to situations in the community. I think the word proactive might get overused some, but I think we need to really be proactive and hopefully my colleagues will, will also buy into it, is that we need, we need to engage the community better, I think. Whether it's partnerships with the, or at least collaborations with some of the organizations like the schools at different levels, elementary school district, high school district, college district. I think we need to really try to make a partnership with the, with the chamber. I know there's been, there was discussion about how we're going to embrace some of these new businesses that, that are making us a proud community now. And I think we need to also talk, think about how, what is, what is San Bruno doing as far as really communicating? It's frustrating in all walks of life on how, you know, when you want to get the pulse of the community, of your constituents, how, how are we actually doing that? And are we being effective with it? So I'd like to do that. I, I'll talk about things like in, as far, I want to, I want to get it out here now that, you know, we really need to take care of that, that marquee sign and, you know, and really be able to communicate to the people on that. I also want to, what else was I going to say? No, I guess that was it. Just to, just to see what we can do to, you know, to probably open up more and probably get, get the community to say, geez, council's out there now, or something. And, you know, talk, talk to them more in, more PR, I guess. So. As if we got time to do that.
Great.
Thank you.
Michael?
No questions?
Great. Kim is going to walk us through the general administrative departments. Thank you.
Were you going to go through the city manager's, city attorney's?
She's, Kim's going to go. I'll answer questions.
Okay.
Well, in an effort to make the presentation tonight a bit more concise, the idea was to house all the general administration departments together under one presentation. All the department heads and division managers are here this evening to answer specific questions, but I will just provide a general overview and then pass it along for questions. So in 2012-13, just to touch upon a few of the more visible accomplishments of the general administration departments, some that you've heard about enough about already probably, but I'd like to just touch upon again. The general admin departments completed negotiations in the implementation of new contracts for all six bargaining units that expired in June 2012. Completed the upgrade of the city's office suite from Office 2000 to Office 2013. And I would just like to add that many of the improvements that hopefully you see both in the presentation on Thursday and this evening and the budget document itself was made far easier as a result of that upgrade. We completed the installation of the fire suppression system in the city hall data center and the implementation of a disaster recovery plan for the city's IT system. And we successfully completed the myriad of audits that were required as part of the wind-down process for the former redevelopment agency and received a finding of completion from the state department of finance in April 2013, which is essentially saying that we've met our obligations as outlined by the law. Looking forward into 2013-14, some of the activities that the general admin departments will be focusing on will be the wage and healthcare reopeners with the bargaining units that is to be complete by December 2013. The city attorney's office, along with finance, will work together to continue to investigate alternative liability insurance providers to, as I called out on Thursday night, we have been hit with a 30% increase in the city's liability insurance premium over the last two years, in part as a result of some incidents that occurred. And so we, what we would like to do over the next year is identify other providers, get some quotes and find out if cost savings can be achieved. Maybe they can, maybe they can't, but we'll further investigate that and also continue to enhance our risk management program to try to address those future incidents. We will continue to work with, the IT department will continue to work with all the other city departments to identify efficiencies through the utilization of technology. And some of the major technology-related items that are being discussed right now will be brought forward as part of the capital improvement program budget, which includes the city's geographic information system, otherwise known as GIS, the CMMS system utilized by our public services department, update to the city's website, as well as the update, potential update of the records management system in the police department. We will, in addition, continue to identify ways to improve customer service. And another option within utilities that we've been looking at is implementing a 24/7 pay-by-phone option so that people can call up 1:00 in the morning if they want to and pay their utility bill. They have that ability to do that online, but there's still a number of customers that don't have access all the time to a computer or internet. So to identify or to implement a pay-by-phone as well as investigate pay-by-mobile phone as well. So those are just some of the activities for the general administration department, and I'm happy to turn it over for questions.
Any questions?
Through the chair?
Rick.
Take a couple divisions and then see, I'll come back. City manager, city attorney. On human resources, under staff training, there's general employee training, and that's good. And I'm just wondering if there's going to be an example of what type of training that means for our staff?
The type of training that we're going to be offering are additional leadership training. Right now, we offer manager supervisor training through a legal consortium. We also offer training for the Samatail County Training Consortium that we just joined, which offers additional leadership training courses and technical courses, customer service courses, and then webinars put on by CAL, ICMA, which is a group that is training the next generation. So those are the type of leadership training courses that we'll be spending the money on.
Thank you.
And then, and meeting with the departments and, and communicating those additional resources. We have these resources available, but what we'll do is we'll meet with each department and just make sure that they know that there's these additional resources.
Thank you. Kim, I had a question. You talked about on the technologies, the continued use of the, for example, the CMMS system, I think you mentioned. Where are we at with that? Because that's something that I've brought up from before, and I know you just alluded to it again. So where are we at with that as far as its funding, its implementation, all departments being, utilizing it, et cetera?
So the CMMS system, the, and all those, to answer all those questions, it's going to be brought forward as part of the capital improvement program budget. So we don't have any of those costs programmed into the operating budget, and it will be part of one comprehensive discussion at that time.
You also talked about, obviously, we have the reopeners to discuss possible salary and benefits. So with that said, what are we doing or is there something that we are doing in order, obviously, with the reopeners and evaluations could lead to additional costs within the same budget year potentially? So are we doing anything for, I know it's, that's a crystal ball, but are we doing anything to have monies? Because I think what would be disingenuous on the city's part to say, we want to discuss it, and then something's evaluated, decided, and we go, well, we didn't, there's no money. So we can't do anything. So how do we broach that next year with the reopeners?
So the budget as it's currently presented does not include any set aside of funds for the reopeners because we don't know the outcome of that reopeners. Part of the discussion that occurred is also the healthcare reopeners and investigating if what can come of that and any potential savings that might come of that. So I think the two of those need to be, will be two joint processes in investigating whether the healthcare reopeners could provide any potential savings. That's one avenue of help funding any potential salary adjustments that might come out of that.
Okay, so there is no monies budgeted or put away or anything for that?
No, not at this time.
Okay. On IT, I just noticed that under staff training, there are a couple line items, 6403 and 6704 that went up, which I can, I guess is just again, keeping us up, as you had said, went up somewhat significantly. And I mean, it's not significant in the overall dollar amount, but went up just from last year.
Could you repeat which line items you're looking at?
6403, 6704. IT.
Under 6405, there were two classes that were, have increased, which is the VMware courses. They're not classes, they're actually five-day courses. They had a significant increase because basically the technology's doing so well, they've increased their costs to keep the, their clients happy and, and keep everything running. The 6403, we spent, I believe, about the same amount last year for our learn-it vouchers, training vouchers for all city employees, and for approximately 40 passes. That equates to about $3,300 for those 40 passes for staff training.
Thank you, and then.
Could I ask, as far as IT, the results, there's a, there's a goal to assist with updating the city website, update meet mandates regarding accessibility requirements. That's fine. I have a, I have a basic problem with our website. It doesn't turn me on or anything. It's, it's pretty blah. It's, it's, you know, I go to other city websites, I go, wow, this is, yeah, this is neat. These are, is there a plan to make any changes to the website?
Next budget year, and I believe it is going to be in the CIP, it will be addressed. Not only does it need a facelift, but it needs a complete overhaul for, for many of the new requirements out there, ADA, compliance and so forth. So there is a plan, it's going to be presented in the CIP.
Okay, and how, how, since we all use it, every department's got stuff on it, you know, we, we've got input or whatever, is there, is there a way that we'll process, that we'll go through to, to make that, make the suggestions to change or facelift and things?
Well, based on what we have ahead of us and what we have to achieve, we will more than likely go out for assistance with another professional services web editing company. To be sure, we are going to be compliant. When we did our last facelift, it was, it was mainly done by city employees.
Right, right.
And I think it was a great accomplishment. But right now, it's, we need additional help to make sure that we do it right. That will be addressed, but no specific plan at this time.
Okay.
I think there's a-
What I, what I don't want is, I don't want to do a lot of work and everything, and then we see it on an agenda and that this is the plan. It's like we didn't have any input or any discussion on it. I think it needs to be throughout the entire organization, some, some input on what we feel is necessary, you know, to, you know, to update the website.
We all agree. And also input from our residents would be helpful.
Oh, wonderful. Good.
I was just, I was going to comment, but please go ahead and comment after.
I was just going to bring up something I had brought up.
Doesn't turn you on either, huh?
No. One of the things, and I've, I will bring this up again, or you can write it down, one of the things that we got complaints about, have gotten complaints about, and the season is coming up now, are all the signs that people put up about garage sales, which I know, hold on a second, it all connects. A city that, let's see, the city of Hutto, Texas, and I'm sure other cities do it as well, they have a, they have a dropdown on their city website that people in the city are, can submit when they're doing garage sales, their address, what items they're selling, all those kinds of things. And then it's linked to a map that shows exactly where that is, it gives the directions. It's really a wonderful service, and then it encourages people not to put the signs up. So it's just another way of linking some of like the code enforcement stuff with things that we can do to help our residents spread their, you know, do their commercials or whatever you want to call it. So it's just a suggestion.
Thank you. You reminded us by email earlier today that, about that comment that you had made last year. The website has been a longstanding issue in two areas. One, as you've properly pointed out, Councilwoman Ibera, that- One, as you've probably pointed out, Councilor Rivera, that it is, it's probably not the most attractive or intuitively organized website. We can certainly do better in terms of its appearance, as staff has indicated, in terms of various issues having to do with user, compliance with user access. But also, there's a second area of interest or concern that, that I've had in terms of our long-term, ongoing management and oversight of the information. The website could look spectacular, it could function beautifully, and still not have up-to-date information, and therefore not be usable or desirable for either the city's information. We need to get out information as well as for the need of our residents and users to receive information. So there's two parts to this story, and one, the physical part, there were funds budgeted last year, and we believe that there is an additional need for some, a smallish amount of additional funding that we'll be discussing with you in the capital budget, as staff indicated, working towards developing a plan for what this is supposed to look like, how it's supposed to operate. On the other side, this, just the ongoing ability of the city to manage and coordinate its information resources is a continuing issue of concern to me, and, and I believe to the organization as a whole. Right now, we have that fairly decentralized, and departments are individually tasked with remembering and then acting to make sure that information is posted timely and well. I don't think that's working as well as it can and it should, and this is kind of a segue to my interests that we highlight for you. The, some of the supplemental requests, some of the service enhancement requests, as we go through each of these departmental presentations, one of them that we're proposing that be funded by the Crestmore Recovery Fund, at least to get us started and in recognition of the overwhelming new needs that the disaster has brought upon us to put information out and for our residents to be informed. We're looking at an additional management analyst position to assist in part with information sourcing and delivery needs across the board, but largely including making sure that what's on the website is informational, timely, and appropriate to the city's need to be communicating with residents. I could ask, Kim, I'd like to ask him before we leave the general administration area to highlight the rest of the supplemental requests, but we're happy to take any additional of your questions right now.
Rico. Finance. First of all, the reason I want to do this separate is I did want to thank you for the work that you and your staff did. I also think that the presentation and the way the budget was, it went easier, flowed, so thank you.
Thank you.
So now, with that, a couple questions.
Okay.
So, and this is just a general one. On postage, it's the same amount of pieces allegedly that are being mailed, however, it went up $1,400. And I know things go up, cost. But in the other departments, the postage costs didn't really go up at all. So I'm just trying to understand the, if it was accounted for in the other departments as well.
Well, we, we based the budget on the actual this year, and so this year, what we anticipated in the development of the current year budget was that more people would be moving towards paperless billing, since, as we've been offering that to customers, and, but the, I guess, the buy-in to that and the move to that hasn't occurred at the rate that we had hoped. And so we are still mailing as many utility bills, or just about as many utility bills as we have been previously. So we just have budgeted according to what the estimate is for this year.
And then if you could just, this goes through all the departments, so this will go, take care of all the others. When we start talking about the internal allocations, obviously, if you look at them, I mean, they fluctuate from thousands of an increase to about the same. I mean, it's, it's unique. I know some of it has to do with liability and some of that, but when it comes to the general administration allocations, and, as you know, I mean, 54,000 here, down here, from one year to the next, and the internal service allocations, can you just quickly try to summarize as to how and why such discrepancies from year to year? And I know it's a reality, but just for the average person to single why?
So the general administration allocation, you do see an increase overall this year because the cost of the general administration departments is increased as a result of the reorganization that occurred last year. So the budget as it was proposed last year had a supplemental reorganization that included the addition of an assistant city manager position. That was not factored into the allocation last year because it was a supplemental proposal. This year is because it's a authorized position, it is included as part of the proposed general admin allocation, and so that is the explanation for the increase across all the departments for that amount. The general admin allocation is simply, it's, somebody comes in, they do an analysis of how much time each of the general admin departments spend supporting all of the other departments, police, and so on. And so, and that's, so that cost is allocated out to the departments, essentially charged out. And it's a recovery when it's from departments such as the water and the wastewater enterprise funds. Within the general fund, it's a wash, it's a, because they're all general fund charges, but that is essentially how it works.
Thank you.
Anything else?
So we just run through the supplemental requests real quickly for the general administrative departments, so we don't lose track of them.
So there is a supplemental proposal in the city manager's office that was discussed on Thursday, which is a set aside of $125,000 of what is referred to as ADA boomerang funds, and this is the undesigned property tax that we receive as a result of the loss of redevelopment. So the proposal is to set aside $125,000 of those funds for work on the development of an economic, economic development plan, yet to be determined. But it's a step towards setting aside some of those funds for purposes that would have historically been funded by redevelopment. In the finance, or, I'm sorry, in the information technology department, there are two items. The first is a proposed reclassification of the current information technology analyst to an information technology manager, and this is a result of sort of the additional workload responsibilities that this person, this analyst, has taken on, as well as the increasing workload of the IT department to support many of these applications that we've discussed just earlier, and we'll discuss with the capital improvement budget. There's also a supplemental proposal to replace 25 computer monitors, and we have about 50 computer monitors within the city that are over 14, 15-inch, computer monitors, not very energy efficient. So the thought is, let's get rid of all those and bring everybody up to the same standard over the next two years. And so this proposal is to replace 25 this year, and then another 25 next year. That amounts to about $5,600, and would be paid for from the technology fund. So those are the supplementals for IT. And then finally, in finance, there is a supplemental proposal for a reorganization that would essentially take the half a management analyst that was shared between the human resources department and finance. It would eliminate or redeploy that analyst, essentially eliminate that analyst from finance, and redeploy that analyst in the police department, and I'll let the police chief discuss that further with his presentation. However, that half an analyst would be eliminated from finance. The proposal also includes a reclassification of an existing ACSR, ACSR3 to a lead ACSR. And the reason for that is to ensure that there is, because of the customer volume, both on the phone and at the counter, it's critical to have an onsite supervisor who's there all the time to address any type of complicated matters that might arise, and to provide that supervision and direction to the customer service staff that some of us on the other side cannot provide because we might be in a meeting and so forth. So this would be an individual who could provide that type of direction all the time. And then finally, the addition of part-time hours in place of the elimination of that management analyst, a part-time assistance, both because of the elimination of lockbox, we now have several hundred mail pieces coming into City Hall and that we have to process that we were not previously processing, and to just provide basic clerical support, filing and so forth of all the AP and payroll records that we amass. So that's the proposal on finance, and that concludes all the supplemental proposals in general admin.
Irene?
Yeah, thank you. Is there a particular reason we're waiting to replace all 50 screens? I mean, if they're that small, if the old ones are that small, I would recommend getting everyone all at the same time. I mean, would it be another $5,000 or so dollars? I, I think, I think the council would agree that it's not that much, and it's probably better for everybody to have the same size.
You can have an e-waste party.
You can.
Will we announce it on the web?
No, no signs.
Anyway, that's my recommendation.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, I, I have two questions. I'm not sure where they fit in, and, and maybe you can tell me to wait or whatever. Do we offer transit passes or the pre-tax transit? Somebody knows. Oh, good.
Yes, we offer that through the HR department, and it's pre-tax. People pay it quarterly, and unfortunately, we don't have a lot of employees taking advantage of it. We have a couple, and every employee is notified their first day of employment of this benefit.
Okay. I know it's not, I don't know, it's not a big, what do I want to say? Maybe, I'm not sure. Maybe there's, maybe there's something we can, all the time. Maybe there's something we can do to promote it that's the size of first day.
Yeah, it sounds like, do we do anything on an annual basis to let people know, or more often?
I think recently, we went through the, the different departments, and we talked about all the benefits that HR offers, including additional life insurance, and that was part of the program, is to notify employees of the additional benefits we have. And certainly, we can, we can send out flyers on an annual basis and continue to meet with the departments and talk about the additional benefits.
Okay. Thank you, and then the other, thank you. And then the other piece is the measure F, I'm, I'm sorry, measure M. It used to be $5 for whatever measure that was, and now it's $10, so I didn't see it in here.
It is, it's partially in here, but not in, in its entirety. So it was previously a $4, the measure M is the, the VLF, the vehicle license fee tax that expired in 2010-11, and I want to say somewhere in there, that was previously $4. It was, it was approved as a $10 fee, so we get an increased amount. So what we've done as part of the operating budget is that we've continued to keep the commitment of funds the same as it was when it was $4, and then that additional amount that the city is receiving above and beyond what we used to receive, we would, thought we would propose and discuss in conjunction with the capital improvement program budget. Because those could be, could be deployed either for streets or stormwater, so we figured that conversation was more appropriate at that time.
Okay, great. As long as it's someplace. Thank you.
Okay. Keep rolling.
Great. Moving on to the Crestmore Recovery Budget, as the city council is aware, for the first time last year, we attempted to put together a budget in the form of a departmental operation that would begin to forecast and try and anticipate and then better track the amounts that are being charged to the Glenview Crestmore Trust Fund, that, as the city council is aware, was established in order to cover all of the city's cost exposure associated with rising from and related to the disaster and the community's response and recovery from the disaster of September 9th, 2010. This budget allocation, while still somewhat difficult to project and anticipate precisely, we're getting better and better at it now as time has gone on, attempts, as I said, to identify and categorize those expenses, all of which are intended to provide the direct support and resources that are necessary, both to assist the neighborhood and individual families recovering and rebuilding their lives, including all of the support activities that we're performing in the neighborhood, to assist in maintaining lots and providing outreach, counseling services, and others, other types of direct services, as well as the funding that is associated with the city's engagement in CPUC proceedings and its advocacy having to do with pipeline safety and other issues, along with those costs associated directly with the rebuild, the physical rebuild of the neighborhood. And as the city council is aware, we've recently entered into a contract, we're pretty excited to be moving forward with the Phase 3 reconstruction project, will be the most financially significant and operationally significant to date, but should move the community and the neighborhood quite a bit further forward in terms of the overall rebuilding effort. In addition to that, during the coming year, we are excited, and this is, this has been a very long time coming, to actually kick off the delivery of the establishment of the not-for-profit that will address the long-term management and monitoring of the $70 million settlement fund. At this point, we anticipate being back to the city council this summer with the initial structuring and appointment of the board, and look forward to being in a position to kick off the operation of, of the not-for-profit within the next 90 days. The, again, the use of the trust fund is done on a reimbursement basis. All of the costs associated with the Crestmore Recovery Budget are fully attributable to activities that are associated with the recovery and rebuilding, and all of these expenses, the total of which is shown in this budget at $3.4 million, is intended to be recovered through the trust fund. I would point out that in addition to that, the trust fund is covering the costs associated with all of the activities that are being delivered through individual departments. So just as an example, a portion of the day-to-day activity that is conducted in the finance department, in the city manager's office, in the city attorney's office, and elsewhere throughout the organization, is directly attributable to the work effort that is necessary to restore and recover, and those costs, in addition, will be recovered from the trust fund on a reimbursement basis. For the coming year, we are proposing a, I'm sorry, what is that? Okay, it's, I'm sorry, as I mentioned earlier, there, there's two items that I want to discuss right now, one of, one of which is shown in another department. But the, the item that is listed in this department as a supplemental request is the management analyst position that I mentioned earlier in response to the discussion that the council had regarding the website. It is a little bit odd, I would say, that now approximately two and three-quarters years since the tragedy of September 2010, that we would be asking for and seeking your guidance regarding additional staff positions that are necessary in order to manage this, the magnitude and the continuation of the disaster response services that are necessary by the community. And I would say that, in fact, it is entirely necessary, and in fact, as time has gone on, what we have learned as an organization and as, as your, the chief executive of the staff organization, I would say that it's been very difficult to predict, but it has been a consuming and continuing work effort. And I'm, I'm glad to say that we're able better to predict. I'm a little bit sorry to say that we sort of have, have had to figure it out as we've gone along. But the position that we're proposing to you tonight is really necessary, particularly from the importance of the need to address both the information requirements, but just simply the day-to-day management and reporting requirements. Just the effort alone to accumulate the information that is necessary to submit a reimbursement request to the trustee for dispersment of trust funds is extremely time-consuming and takes away, in this case, from the management analyst assigned to all of the other responsibilities in supporting my office, takes away her time and attention, literally, for days, if not weeks at a time, in order to process reimbursement requests. We think we can and we should do that more efficiently in the interest of city services to all of our community residents. The second item that I'd like to mention now, and then you can, you can discuss any additional follow-up with the police chief when this item comes forward, it's actually listed in the police department budget, and that is an individual to assist the organization in emergency preparedness, an emergency preparedness specialist. Again, is something that I would say, in our effort over these past two-plus years, simply to respond and address the recovery from the disaster, one of the things that simply to respond and address the recovery from the disaster, one of the things that I think has, as things begin on the horizon to start to settle back, that we have not addressed frankly, is the need for this organization to be at the highest level of preparation and ability to respond possible. I will, I will say that, again, as I've said many times before, that this organization performed spectacularly well. I will also say that we did that largely by instinct and understanding based on a, the base of understanding we have of disaster protocols, and with a great deal of help, particularly for the more highly technical and specialized aspects of disaster response. I think we, I think it's fair to say that even as much as we could not have predicted what happened in this community in two thousand and ten, I think it is fair to say that we could reasonably expect that a next disaster that might affect this community is unlikely to bring with it the outpouring of unique support and assistance to what exactly was going on in San Bruno. And if nothing else, we know better than probably anybody else among our colleagues what it takes and how long it can take to address a disaster the magnitude that we experienced. We need to be better prepared, and we need to be leading the way, and I think that additional resources in that area are critically important to our organization, to build on the good foundation that we already have, to make sure that we are not only with the pack, but that we are at the head of the pack, because that's not only what our community expects, but frankly, it's what the world expects of San Bruno. So that item, again, is shown in the Police Department budget, but I thought I would mention it now because it is another of those initiatives that we're proposing to be funded by the trust.
Questions?
Through the chair, real quick, I noticed on the personnel allocations, obviously, they go up and down, because obviously, as it says, as we continue on, we start to adjust that for the needs. And I'm just wondering, because I know there's about five, I think five different, or new titles that are added on to this than last year's, various increments. What is the turnaround time as far as us recouping the monies through the Administrator, through the trust, as far as, you know, when the disaster happened up until this point? How often do we put in, and how often do we get reimbursed, and how, how up to date are we on that reimbursement?
So the last reimbursement request that we did was about, I want to say, two months, month and a half ago, two months ago. We try to do those quarterly. They have been spread out further just due to the tremendous workload, so I think in some cases, we've gone about six months. So part of this, the desire to have assistance with Management Analyst would be to make sure that those are done in a more timely manner, every two to three months tops. And then, as far as the staff time specifically, we do have a backlog as far as the submittal of staff time, we have not yet submitted the staff time for exempt. And let me, let me clarify what I'm saying here, so there's a differentiation between what we have called the direct charges, which is the overtime, part-time salaries, sort of the, the time that is directly charged to the trust. And when I say that, it's, it's people who are working overtime, are doing, are working additional hours as a result of the support to the Crestmore Recovery. We treat exempt city staff, such as the City Manager and myself, slightly different because we continue to be budgeted fully in the general fund, because that, that, we don't want to skew the general fund staffing levels. So we continue to be budgeted, budgeted fully in the general fund, but we allocate a portion of our time to this effort, and will recover from the trust fund through reimbursement request for that time. So certain portions of the staff time have already been recovered, but not all of that, and that includes staff time, regular city staff time, if that makes sense.
I think so.
Yeah, I want to touch, I mean, I can appreciate wanting to be accountable for all the time that's been spent, but in reality, that employee is not punching a clock and saying, okay, I'm not, I'm not doing Glenview now, I'm now doing this. You've come up with a formula, you've come up with some, you know, percentage of time that goes on, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick out Community Development and Public Services, I mean, those are two departments that have got a lot of work they gotta do outside of Glenview. And I'm looking at, I'm looking at their budgets and how they're trying to enhance their, their services in the community, but then they've got their portions also, you know, in Glenview. So at what point do we say, okay, point two of this person is not realistic or something? Maybe because of the trust, why don't we just, you know, bring in, you know, consultant services or something, so that can free up? What I'm getting at is, I think we might be maybe overusing our staff in some cases because they're doing certain things here, and then they gotta go certain things there, and it's not all calculated, calculated. It's like, all of a sudden, they gotta jump off of this and, you know, and deal with Glenview, and vice versa and stuff, so. I'm, I'm just throwing that out there because I'm looking at your percentages, and then I was also having the same thoughts when I was going through the other departments, like, this is schizophrenia, you know, something, and trying to juggle all this stuff.
I'm gonna try and respond to that, and just simply say that we, we agree. Speaking for staff, I think that we recognize and appreciate not only that this has been hugely impactful, but it's, it's also very difficult to be entirely accurate, and I would say that if we've done anything, we've probably erred on the, on the side of being somewhat conservative, in other words, thinking, well, we're, you know, this is just another thing that we need to do, it's part of our sort of normal, not thinking, oh, you know, we can, we should just bring in more staff, we should just bring in more staff all the time, because that's not a, frankly, not the way we think. But I will say, that said, I think that what, what you don't see here is that in some areas, and in the Community Development Department, for one, there is additional resource that's being directly charged on a contractual basis, which is not a city employee, is a contracted resource to assist in picking up some of the pieces. So I, I think that this is a fair statement of, a, in a manageable work program, but we've certainly heard what you say, and staff will revisit the issue and, and let you know if we, if we think strategically that we need to be looking at something a little bit different.
Michael?
To, to follow up on, on your answer to Rico's question about, you said that there, certain employees get, you, you account for it differently, depending, so the exempt staff is treated differently in how that money, so I'm just, I'm curious then, some of the money is coming back to the department, and it's accounted for in their budget, but other portions are not accounted for, so then does that lead to a surplus at the end of the year in the overall general fund, because that, we're basically double-counting for certain employees?
So when we do submit the reimbursement request for the exempt staff time, yes, we will have a surplus in the general fund, it's a, you know, we haven't budgeted for it as part of the operating budget because it's, I would call, limited duration, in that we don't want to get used to having that inflow of funds, and then suddenly, in a few years, not have that any longer, so we've purposely not included that in the base operating budget, however, it is something that we watch as far as the one-time fund, and will be something that will be proposed, or got proposed, but will be seen when we present the one-time fund, and some of the funds that come into that as part of the capital improvement budget.
Okay, and so the five point seven five FTE that are accounted for here, essentially, none of these people are essentially, they don't, if, if we stopped doing anything with Glenview today, none of these people would be displaced, say, or are not needed, they're, they're accounted for somewhere else as well as here?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I was getting at, is that if it's on the other side of the coin, if they're being pulled too much to Glenview, you know.
Well, Ken, through the chair, I think, Ken, you're, maybe I'm wrong, but the other concern is too, is are we meeting all, all of the community's needs, customer service levels, are those being hindered because we are asking staff to juggle? And it's been resilient, obviously, for almost three years, and we appreciate that, but it's, at some point too, you know, as you said, no one ever trained for this, there's no blueprint for this, so at some point, are we also having the services that the entire community feel at the counter or at other aspects, are they being hurt somewhere along the line, not intentionally, but because of what we're doing?
I, I think staff's position is that this is a reasonable statement of an achievable, legitimate work program. We, we appreciate what, what the Council is saying, and I think certainly the, the staff is all here, they're hearing and understanding what you're saying, and I think that this is something that perhaps we'd like to talk a little bit about further, we hear and understand what the Council is saying, and, and I, while I believe that this is a legitimate and achievable work program, we wanted you to see because, and we want the public to know, because this is, you all expect, really can't just be totally outsourced either, so there's a, it's kind of a, you know, we need the leadership and guidance and the attention of this, of the City Council and the, and the Mayor, and I think similarly, you need, you need us to be providing some level of, of participation and support, so it's kind of a, it's kind of a delicate balance. But interestingly, you're absolutely right, I don't think that we've accounted for the City Council's.
Mostly the Mayor's.
Time and your.
Half of four hundred eighty six good bucks.
Right.
We need another Mayor.
There you go. Anyway, and if, if we're ready to go, I think next department is, please.
Through the chair, real quick, I just wanted to ask about workers' comp.
You probably want to ask him and not the chief about that.
Well, no, you can, it's just, and I know we discussed this last time about the increase, you know, there's increases, obviously, to workers' comp and the risks and liabilities, and I'm just wondering, how are we doing as far as claims this year versus last year, not specific into the nuances of them, but obviously, those things drive insurance and premiums, and what are we doing as far as educating, training, trying to analyze so that what may happen today isn't repeated down the road six months, because we've mitigated that, we've retrained a staff member, so that, and other techniques in whether it's lifting something or what have you?
In terms of the claims numbers, I would say in the last three to five years, our claims actually have gone down. We're, we're trying to close out as many claims as we can, so there's less open and active claims. What we've also tried to do is to mitigate additional injuries, is evaluate at our safety training meetings, is go through some of the injuries, and talk about ways to prevent injuries. Is it more training, is it looking at ways to restructure, maybe like a equipment, or if there's an ergonomic injury, maybe we need to look at additional computer or things, equipment that we could, we could do and use.
Thank you.
Good evening, honorable Mayor members of the City Council. The Police Department budget proposal before you tonight reflects our continued efforts to contain expenditures whenever possible. Our proposal tonight also includes requests for personnel and equipment that will better allow us to serve this community. In terms of accomplishments, the department handled over twenty-eight thousand calls for service in two thousand and twelve, sometimes handling over a hundred calls a day. Requests for Police Department assistance range from resolving neighborhood disputes all the way up to responding to crimes in progress and concluding homicides. Providing service in these twenty-eight thousand calls for service results in accomplishments that sometimes you don't really hear about. That includes resolving a parking issue, maybe getting a drunk driver off the road, locating an elderly resident that was walked away from home and reported missing, or investigating a case that results in the arrest of a subject for crimes that include gang violence, human trafficking, robbery, burglary, and other crimes that were committed in San Bruno just during the last year. The department does customer service surveys on service delivery, and of those surveys returned, the department accomplished a ninety-three percent approval rating. Those surveys also provide us an avenue to hear from citizens regarding their concerns in their neighborhood. Those, and it's not going to come as a surprise to you, it includes traffic-related issues, property crimes, and requests for increased patrols. In the past decade, the department has cut seven sworn positions and three non-sworn positions. So to give you an example, when I started, or thereabouts, close to thirty years ago, we had fifty-one sworn officers, today we have forty-five. What's different today is that we receive funding for one car room detective by Artic Chukjose, two officers by Tanforan, and we have partial funding for our only traffic officer. Departments found it difficult to maintain our same level of service that the communities previously enjoyed. One of those positions eliminated was the officer assigned to handle ongoing community complaints regarding blight and quality of life issues. The department is seeking another officer to be assigned to develop solutions to those ongoing community concerns, that are the subject of those chronic complaints that we hear about and you hear about as well. Recently, you heard about concerns regarding our downtown area, so what we did is, we had all three of our patrol shifts addressing those issues, but you had different issues at different times of the day. So our nighttime officers were patrolling for a little different reason than our daytime officers, who were patrolling to be more visible, more of a deterrent, our nighttime officers are more trying to be reactive and prevent crime from happening. All at the same time, there was no one handling and coordinating this effort, so it was somewhat delayed, it was somewhat scattered, but we needed someone to, to work with Community Development to find out information on a specific business, somebody to work for Code Enforcement to find out their little piece of the puzzle, Fire Department for Code Enforcement, and what we're proposing for you tonight is restoration of that position that would coordinate all of those efforts. This is a vital link that we see between all the other different departments as well, so it's not just serving the Police Department, it's serving the community, and that would be a link with Fire Department, Code Enforcement, Building and Planning, and of course, the City Attorney's Office. Previous reductions in the Police Department eliminated one of the command staff members in the full-time assistant position that provided administrative report, administrative support at the Police Department. Police Department has attempted to fill the administrative assistance void with the part-time use of a police clerk. This approach has created gaps in work product delivery at the clerical end. The department is requesting a reallocation, as you heard earlier, of the Management Analyst position to be shared with Human Resources. We're the largest department in the city, we create a tremendous workload for Human Resources, and by assigning and sharing that Management Analyst position with Human Resources, we ease the burden of the workload on Human Resources, and at the same time, we gain some administrative support that is needed at the Police Department. The loss of positions at the Police Department and the command staff level, combined with the Fire Department's shared services, has limited our ability to focus on emergency preparedness and planning. And like the City Manager mentioned, we're seeking to add an Emergency Services Coordinator to devote more time and resources to preparation, mitigation, and recovery of a disaster or emergency event. This position would coordinate all training for city staff, liaison with the Office of Emergency Services, and also liaison with other cities and their emergency service coordinators. This is going to enhance our ability to respond to a disaster. The Police Department will look to advancements in technology to improve efficiency and enhance our service to the public. The department is seeking to replace dated equipment as part of our capital improvement budget that will come to you soon. But I wanted to mention something that we do have included in our general fund budget, and that is to use asset forfeiture monies to purchase software that downloads information from mobile devices and tablets. Currently, we have to send investigators to other cities to download these devices, and that may take hours at a time, but that ties up the investigator, they can't leave, they have to watch the item get downloaded. We're seeking to purchase one to be housed at the Police Department, this way it'll allow the investigators to do other functions such as type in their reports while this, these devices are downloaded. I can tell you that the device and the software has proven invaluable and has given us tremendous leads on cases that otherwise we wouldn't have been able to determine. We're also seeking funding to subscribe- We're also seeking funding to subscribe to an online pawn database, and this way, we can track items that may have been stolen in a property crime. We can also possibly look up items based on a description to see if they've been pawned. Quite often, stolen property items are often delivered at pawn shops. This gives us one more tool to help us solve crime in the community. The department will continue to manage its resources as our mission of providing safety and services to this community is paramount. As you know, there continues to be a demand for traffic enforcement, and we'll continue to utilize overtime to combat spikes in criminal activity. If we see a spike in gang activity, we are going to use overtime to devote resources to that to keep the community safe. Currently, we're seeing, as other cities in San Antonio County, we're seeing a spike in property crimes, and we're devoting overtime to resources to try and stop and apprehend those responsible for those crimes. So that concludes my presentation. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions of the chief. I ring, go ahead.
I didn't have any.
Oh, you didn't? I'm sorry. Rico?
Chief, a few questions. I had made a suggestion as far as maybe some resources one time for publications for crime prevention. Could we need to update what they had in then the explore program? Is that somewhere in here, or is that not reflected, or was that a decision not to include that?
No, we did hear your comments at a recent council meeting. We do have access to DOJ who has updated those brochures, so we will be addressing that issue. We believe that we can do that with our current budget proposal.
Okay, because I know DOJ is not like it used to be as to where they just have abundance of what you want, how you want. You're limited to the quantities or how often. So like I said, when I was at Tanforan, we certainly need an infusion of some more updated recent type of materials. So you're telling me then that that is doable without any additional resources or funds in the budget?
At this point in time, we think we can do it. We think we can do it by using available technology from DOJ and just downloading the information and printing it ourselves. But I promise you, we did hear you, and we will be addressing those issues.
Your word is good. Okay, let me go on to gas and oil, fuel for police department vehicles. It's, there's no increase this year, which is fine if that is what it is. I know it's tracked through the device. The prior year was up 10,000, so I'm just wanting to know, is that we don't see any additional costs? Because I know in the fire, I think it's up about 5,000. So I'm just wanting to, you have enough money allocated to fuel cars? Important.
I think the fluctuation from fuel costs was a little more severe last year, but I would have to defer to our finance director.
Across the board, we monitor things like fuel and oil. Just, we have the card reader out there, and we budget according to historical actuals.
Okay, thank you. Under equipment purchases, that was up significantly, but I notice it was, it is for, what, three marked vehicles?
Correct.
For the 82,000, so that was a, Mayor and I were kind of joking that you had the old-fashioned photo up there of the old squad cars, so we didn't know if that was a reference, but is this, do you see this, are these at their life expectancy, or?
So we predict that three vehicles will exceed their life expectancy over the next coming year. The unknown in this is that there hasn't been an identified replacement for the Ford Crown Victoria, which we currently utilize. So over the coming year, we're going to work with staff at the corp yard to evaluate the police package vehicles that are out there and make the best selection for use in San Bruno.
Okay. The other thing, which you have no control, none of us do, the county services and charges. They look like they're up 45,000 plus this year, they were up $71,000 last year. Where are we at as far as, for your knowledge, is, at what point, you know, I mean, it just gets up, every city is being hit like this to that type of degree? Is there any limitation in sight? I know at the emergency services council, we kind of keep it pretty flat as far as increases, or sometimes even decreases, and it amazes me the continued increases that we have every year from this.
So one of those is animal control services, and when that contract was extended and we brought that back to the council, I believe it was last year, we knew that increase was coming. The other, there was a decrease in booking fee charges because of realignment, and the other increase was due to the courts imposing more of a fine, and we reflected that increase in our parking fines when we brought our parking fine increase to you, and I believe that was maybe about a year ago as well.
Okay. I mean, I know you don't have control, it just surprises me. On the, I believe Corporal Phillips was the last officer to hold the position that you're wanting to have reinstated?
That's correct.
And how, how long ago has he been retired? About?
At least three years ago.
I'm glad this has been brought forward. I think it's overdue. I think it provides a good link, and I know when I was on crime prevention, I think it had, going back to my young days, but I mean, it was a valued aspect for the police department to have the liaison, to have the outreach in the community, to try to deal with some of the mitigation issues that the community kind of expects. So I appreciate that. And on the position for preparedness, maybe more to the city manager, is this, it's not an ongoing, it's a position for a period of time, i.e. a year, two, three? Do we know?
Our initial thought is that that is a two to three-year position, and again, our intent is to get the organization to where we believe it needs to be. It's certainly not something that we would anticipate being accomplished in one year. Our current estimate is two and probably three years.
And I want to thank that this is coming forward, I think, Connie, you mentioned, and I appreciate your comments about our preparedness and where we should be, and I won't go over all, but you know my passion on this topic and the emails you've received, and so I do agree, as we've talked, that I think we should, for all that we've experienced, we should be at the head of the pack, we should be leading by example, and if you want to call it the poster child, as we're trying to be in other elements. I think this is critical as well. And Saturday, I was at community preparedness at the county fair on Saturday, and there's a lot of things we can learn, a lot of things we can join and be a part of, and bring our community up to other cities that have been engaged in this, too. There's a lot of resources and efforts out there, and I think this will be a great link in which to bring those together, to make sure our exercise and our participation at all levels is where it should be.
Ken?
Chief, hate to say, but you know, you did explain that, you know, that with the cuts in staffing and stuff, and we serve on a board together that serves the youth, at-risk group youth, but there's nothing in here, what, where is, what's our involvement? What's the department's involvement in the schools?
So we have, and we will continue to deploy our school resource officer, and our school resource officer serves all schools. The difference is, the city, previously, when that position was implemented, it was a partnership with the high school district. That partnership has since, that contract has just expired, so the city fully funds that position. But there is a school resource officer that is in all of our schools and does work closely with the schools as well as our youth diversion through YMCA, which you also sit on that board.
Yeah. Okay. So what, who is this person? I mean, is this a sworn officer?
Sworn officer, school resource officer, and again, he serves all the schools. He probably handles in excess of 100 calls a year between the high schools, our middle school, and our elementary school.
So we haven't reduced any of the services?
No, that was one of the services that, when these reductions were made, that was something that we brought before you and something that we identified, and you concurred that that was an important officer to keep in place as it deters youth from crime.
So my only comment is, should be in here. There's, is there, did I miss it? I went over it many times.
The officer, the officer is funded in our, the officer is funded in our total personnel.
Keep going.
So he is included in one of the 45 officers, and that position is in there.
Okay, I didn't, I wasn't looking at the, I was looking in the dialogue here, so. Okay, I'm convinced, thank you.
Michael?
Thank you.
I missed it here, but I did.
If we're intending to fund a position for two to three years, wouldn't it make, or would it also make sense or make more sense to hire, say, a team of three consultants for one year and get to where we want to be with our emergency preparedness?
That's certainly something that we could look at. My initial reaction is that a longer-term approach is going to be necessary because this is not, it's fundamentally not about preparing and delivering a work product and saying, okay, here it is. It's taking the, handholding the finance department, let's say, to pick on my colleague at the same table here, to say, okay, you know, this is where you're at, this is where you need to get to. These are the things that the department fundamentally needs to undertake to learn via training, but also the initiatives that need to be put into place so that you have a book of, you've got your binder of vendors that you're going to use to source supplies, and you've got open purchase orders and relationships with all of these vendors. Isn't necessarily something that somebody can come along and deliver to you so much as it's going to be needing to work side by side with us and for us to devote our time and attention. And I would say that's probably the biggest reason why I would be less comfortable with the idea of being able to get it all done quickly. Certainly it needs, certainly needs to start and to be worked over, you know, beginning immediately. I'm not sure that the organization has the capacity to do what it needs to do in a short period of time. Does that make sense?
Would, I guess one concern I would have is, could we really hire one person that could address all of the different issues? I mean, besides what we need to do in finance, would that person also be able to tell us, your public works department is not ready to handle a disaster because of this and that and the other thing? Our communications, our technology, there's so many different aspects to what we could consider in a complete emergency plan, and could one person possibly have that breadth of knowledge to really address everything? Whereas if we were to hire somebody, a company that specializes in that, could they not possibly do a more encompassing job?
And that's, that's an alternative that we will certainly look at. The short answer is, that may be, that may be a good possibility for us, and as Council Member Medina indicated, there's lots of tools and resources available through the county and elsewhere that it's, it's not up to one person to produce all of the initiative and the information that we need. It's, the idea was more of a person who is tasked with coordinating all of the various resources and all of the information, all of the various activities and initiatives that need to be done. So if that's, you know, we can certainly look at that further to see whether a, frankly, it's difficult to hire a limited-term professional position. It's almost, it's very difficult, I won't say almost impossible, it's very difficult to find a person who's got the right skill set and tools and can, is willing to work for two years. So it may be by necessity that we need to look at a variety of different ways of structuring that. And again, we appreciate your, the city council's interest and would look forward to this being utilized as a resource. It was certainly, we can come back and give you further information as we go down the path to figure out what's the best way to do it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And the only other question I had was regarding, in the maintenance section, there was, there was some computer equipment listed in there, and I was just wondering if there's any overlap, because there's also an allocation, internal allocation from the IT support. And so I'm wondering, was there, at what point is there not overlap there? Is there a special equipment that the police department has to maintain separately from what our IT department supports?
Yes, so the nine-on-one and the records management and the computer automated dispatch, that's all maintained separately from IT. And then IT does maintain a portion of the internal computers that we have. So they are separate, there's not overlap in the budget, they are two separate issues.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thanks, chief.
I want to talk to you about the fire service a little bit. In the last 12, 13 fiscal year, we're on pace to run about 4,000 calls this year in the community. And this will be the first full year that we've had the shared fire chief with the other four agencies. And so we went from a .5 fire chief here in San Bruno FTE to a .25, so we had a .25 savings in the past year of a fire chief position. And we began this year in 12, 13 with 29 line budgeted positions, but only 24 of those positions were actually filled. So we had 29 line folks that were budgeted, 24 were filled, which meant unfortunately had a negative impact on our overtime. And in my short tenure here, the city manager, Ms. Jackson, has reinforced the fact of the importance to keep the overtime numbers down in the council's direction. So I will do my best in this next upcoming year to address it and to do what we have to, to stay on top of it, to make sure that we keep it down. We did have some disadvantages as far as we had to pay salary and benefits for individuals that were in the academy, and while they're in the academy, we didn't have the bodies to actually use them at that time to help offset the overtime. So we kind of got double-dinged on it by paying the salaries and benefits until they got out of the academy and through their paramedic accreditation. Took about four to five months through the process. So it became a little bit on the expensive side, but now we're starting to see the overtime numbers come down where they should be. So with that, we are also looking at standardizing and centralizing all the policies and procedures, the way we do business, and we've started to do that. And in the last, basically, last eight weeks, we've really kind of geared up a little bit as far as trying to reduce the duplication of efforts. Prior to my arrival, we had two deputy chiefs that were both basically doing the same jobs and tasks in two different areas. One for the town of Hillsborough and city of Burlingame, and then for the town of, the city of Milbrae and the city of San Bruno. So what we've done now is we've reassigned those deputy chiefs to where they actually have their tasks that they're assigned will be from San Bruno border to the central county fire border, and in hopes in doing so, that right now, we are doing business three different ways. So what we're trying to do with this whole consolidation, this merge, is try to do business one way. And so the fastest, easiest, quickest way to do it, most efficient way to do it, is to make sure that we task everybody, one person, individual, with three ways of doing it, and trying to make sure that they come up with a way, whether it's one of the three ways of doing it, or it's a brand-new way of doing it, but we're trying to find the best way and the best practice of doing this. So in doing so, the hopes is to have further reductions, and that's where future savings will come into play, where we can actually go to eventually one deputy chief, possibly where we have two battalion chiefs per shift, we can go down to one battalion chief per shift. So that's what we're intending, and that's what we're trying to work on, that's where we're focusing our energies. We've started a department advisory committee, which actually, we have our first meeting next, not tomorrow, but following Tuesday. It's to help improve the communications between the line personnel and with management to find out what our needs are and to fully evaluate the department in this next upcoming year. In doing so, we're also looking at combining the record management system and the telestaff system, which is a staffing system. So we're trying to take three different record management systems and put them into one system in itself, and on that, we're also going to go ahead and do our staffing. Right now, it's still done on by pen and paper and by hand. We're trying to computerize our staffing and make it to the same way some of our neighboring agencies are doing it. We are also utilizing grant funds to replace the laptops, expensive laptops that are on our pieces of equipment on the apparatus with laptops that are on our pieces of equipment on the apparatus, with iPad technology. And with the iPads, we're also be trying to integrate with operationally, training, fire prevention, and also EMS, emergency medical services. So with that, we're trying to do, we've been able to do it, get the equipment through grant funds, so there's no cost to the city. And so we're able to place those on, and we have in-house expertise, and we have some committees that are working on it to try to put these in place. So, and with that, we're also looking, because we know emergency services position's going to be an important position, is an important position to the city, and we know that through the direction of the city manager, through yourselves, that we want to look forward and look forward to supporting it. We have resources within the fire department that we think we can help this individual, whoever it may be, come forward. Ends up being a group, a company come through, we will work with and make sure that San Bruno has the highest emergency preparedness that we can deliver. And with that, as far as for budget-wise, we are going to see an increase in our overtime, about $165,000 from previously from last year. We are going to hire a part-time inspector, and this is because in the shared services that we're doing, we are sharing a fire marshal with the city of Milbrae. And so with that, we have a half-time person that we have sent to Milbrae. So that halftime, we need an inspector here in town to catch up on some of that work and to maintain that work. We are also, proposed before you in the budget, is storage lockers for personal protective equipment per NFPA 1951. It requires that we have adequate ventilation, storage, and since we're spending basically $2,500 per set of turnout safety gear, it's, we just want to make sure that we're staying NFPA compliant. So the last piece of it that I want to leave you with is, we are also addressing the fire hose and purchasing fire hose and want to say thank you to the council as far as trying to avoid that piecemealing effect that we discussed in the last study session. We'll be going ahead and outfit our first, our upfront, first-line vehicles and apparatus with fire hose and a full complement of. And so that, for the most part, concludes. I'd be more than happy to answer questions that you have regarding the budget.
Questions to the chief?
Chief, thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
All this talk about emergency preparedness and safety and things, and I can appreciate the fire department's past constraint on inspecting multi-unit dwellings and the auto-repair businesses and things. And then you mentioned, you mentioned that you're going to, you're going to supplement that with an inspector and all this sharing. What, what is the program? I mean, are we behind? Do we just sort of, you know, get to inspect businesses when you can? Or is there a plan? I mean, because what, personally, what I don't want to know is that, you know, if there is a fire, you know, there's fire in the news every day. Thankfully, not in San Bruno, but if something happens, and it could have been something that could have been prevented through an inspection, or just some resident awareness or business awareness, I'd hate to, I hate to think that, you know, we were behind on that. So what's your thoughts on that, being newcomer here and seeing, you know, that we do need added help?
And a lot of the credit goes to the fire marshal, Jim Allen, and the crews that have been out, you know, making it happen. So we were on pace to complete 100% of the inspections this year. So fiscal year 12, 13 is completed, we'll complete 100% of the inspections. But it wasn't without a lot of great deal of work and doing things a little bit out the outside of the scope as far as business hours, making sure that we were using all the workers' comp, you know, folks that were there that were available for light duty. We were assigning them to fire prevention, we weren't assigning them to training or any other area. We totally concentrated on doing it because we knew we had to kind of come together and address that. So next year, hopefully, the workers' comp cases will go down, and we'll have an inspector in place that will be able to make things a little bit easier and a little bit more streamlined.
I can, I appreciate to have some sort of, maybe a happier report or something on, you know, on inspections, so that, you know, at least you let the community know that they're going into a business or a building that has been inspected and is safe.
You bet.
Thank you.
Rico?
Chief, a few things. I noticed there's some, monies allocated under operating supplies for cert program and materials.
Mm-hmm.
So I appreciate that. It's good to see that in the budget. I know that's new. I would ask, under operations, under communications, as in last year, to have the items spelt out. So if it's $10,000 for one and $2,000 for the other, just to have that quantified as it has in the past. I'd like to understand, there's a county service charge, and it's for a dashboard program of $3,800. What is that?
That is a new program that the county chiefs approved earlier this year, and that is basically a data collection, which will allow us to analyze, and I have not seen it in full detail, but apparently is going to be able to analyze almost anything we want as far as response times. It'll be able to tell us where the calls are at and be able to make judgments based upon, as far as boundaries. Are we sending the closest engine? Are the boundary lines correct? Should 51, our lower engine, be going to areas? And should we move the line down? And so it's going to allow us to map out the city as far as response to the response times. So the county, the county chiefs, my first meeting I went to last month, I asked them about it, and they said, be reassured, you'll be impressed with it. And I said, okay.
And then, thank you. We're talking about the charges, and you talked about it earlier. It's kind of arranged to where it's a quarter of a chief now, it's a half of a deputy, it's two battalion chiefs, I'm incorrect on something, stop me. So just so that it's clear too, as far as where the cost savings are with the fire church service, because it gets a little, you know, Milbrae and San Bruno are sharing battalion chief Allen, but now we're allocating $35,000 potentially to help assist in that. So I just want to kind of keep it straight, so that we have it in case we're asked, okay, where are the savings? Because if there was a savings of $70,000, well, $35,000 of that is now going because obviously, there's assistance that is needed to meet the needs, like what Ken was saying. And that's solely on San Bruno. So is Milbrae also having that same situation to where they're needing to put some monies in also?
For the most part, everybody's operating on a cost neutral, and with the hopes that there'll be savings down the road as we progress through this. So right now, there's no added cost, and we're hoping that we're increasing and that we're improving the services that we're being delivered, and at a cost neutral. So as we move forward, I think we'll see more savings as we go through and make this analysis.
Okay, you talked about the hoses, and I appreciate that, and I know I was one who brought up about safety. And I guess I want to be assured that the $55,000 will adequately ensure that we have up-to-date, because my understanding is, and I heard this over in San Mateo, that we have outdated hose. We've also had a couple incidences where the hose has been flawed. And I don't, I just, it's age, it's wear and tear. The synthetic versus the cotton, that ones heavier, ones lighter. And then obviously, when it expands with the pressure, that the mobility for a fireperson to be able to maneuver and fight the fire adequately is hampered. So is this going to ensure that all of the vehicles that go out in responses, and if we have a reserve engine, because obviously, if one goes down, we need to, we need to jump in the other one and go. I mean, I can't foresee everybody saying, okay, let's switch out the hose. So is, does that take care of all of that?
So, most of that. It takes care of, it takes care of the front two engines, front two line engines. When you now read, ask about the reserve engine, we're probably going to have to come back next year. 50% of our hose that we have right now is outdated. So we are going to go ahead and purchase that for the 50%, and make sure that we are now updated with all of our hose, and that will carry us into, to next year, the budget year.
And I guess the only reason I bring it up, is that, is that something that the $55,000 is adequate, or is it that should it be increased to take care of the reserve situation? I just worry that, engine goes down, they come back, we need to get to the reserve. Okay, so, but now, is that hose able to go out and provide that same type of level to the community and the neighboring cities? Or do we need to switch out the hoses because these are updated and these are not?
It costs, excuse me, it costs about almost $30,000 per engine to outfit with hose. So when we do that, we're going to outfit, I'm sorry, about $25,000 per rig. So that gives us $50,000, and about $5,000 for extra hose. So that will outfit the first front two engines. And now, if we have to, if we have hose that's damaged, we have $5,000 cushion to go ahead and outfit and replace, or to take and put in service on the frontline vehicles. So what we'll end up doing then is, since 50% of our hose is still in usable shape, we will put those on the reserve engine, so they'll be able to go from one engine to the other and be able to respond with it. That hose is nearing the end of its life, so that we may, in the next fiscal year or the fiscal year after that, be coming back to you to outfit the other two.
Thank you.
So on that also, since we have shared services in the JPD, is it safe to say that every city is thinking the same thing about replacing their hoses?
That is correct. Most of the other departments have put in some kind of replacement schedule.
They're sort of a little more up to date. That's what I heard of the San Mateo County. Am I wrong?
There, no, we're catching up. We're catching up.
Good answer.
Yeah.
You could be sitting up here with that.
Yes, we could, we could be in a better position, and we're going to get there as quick as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, public services provide beside engineering, right-of-fame management, development, development review support, also management of public assets for system such as transportation, water, sewer, and store. Also, public services provide fleet management services for city operation. What fleet management, what the department is doing on yearly basis for managing the city fleet, really is assessing each equipment on yearly basis based on the date of purchase, the usage of the equipment, the maintenance cost, and we'll discuss those, we'll have a recommendation for the replacement of that specific equipment, and we'll sit down with each department, user department, and further discuss the need for replacement or reduction of that specific equipment from the fleet, and also discussing further recommendation with the user department. For this year, I would highlight a few major accomplishment for the department. The development and approval of our water system master plan. Also, a major accomplishment for the department was completing the video inspection for our sewer system. And also, development up to 80% of the asset information for our storm water system. For operation and maintenance, our focus for these upcoming years, the budget what you have before you, will be focused on ongoing increase of the operational efficiency, and also further improvement of the asset information and data management for the department. In those two categories, I would mention, for sewer, for our sewer system, our sewer operation is going through maybe the most aggressive changes in operational area for the last two years, really moving very aggressively, aggressively from a reactive to a very proactive maintenance program. And as part of this proposal for next year, you will see a new line item included in our operational budget for sewer, a ongoing video inspection item for $70,000. The reason for that proposal is that until now, the video inspection for the system was handled on the CIP as a one-time project. And now, that project being completed, now you will have a ongoing need for video inspection after any SSO or on need, needed basis. Also, for, for the further improvement of asset information, is our recommendation to extend the use of CMMS for water division. This will be further discussed, as already, our finance director mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, the extension and the CMMS project will be included in our CIP project, and you will have more information during that presentation. Also, for data information improvement for our system, is our intent to achieve close to 100% asset information development for our storm system. From 80%, that was the achievement for this year, and our intent to further improve that information database close to 100%. I would mention also, for these were program changes, from a budgetary changes, from a dollar point of view, you see also in our budget proposal, an increase on the storm of power washing of the sidewalk in downtown, which is no, is no change in program itself, but you see an increase of the cost to, basically, to maintain the same service level in downtown. Those will be the major changes for, and focus for this upcoming year, beside those ongoing tasks for the department, like providing ongoing support for the Crestmore reconstruction area. I have here, I don't think you ever had the chance to meet Robert Wood and William Lee, those are the new two management analysts who helped us with budget development. And also, Dennis Bosch, the service manager for sewer, is here to help me with any question what you might have.
Questions?
You go first.
I was going to ask about the note that says that there was an increase of $80,000 in internal allocations, and I was wondering if you could elaborate on that, why the change in that internal allocation?
I would defer this answer. The finance director already gave you a summary answer for all of the department, and certainly, I would defer that answer to her.
So the increase in the internal allocations is a result of two things. One, earlier I mentioned that there's an increase in general administration allocation as a result of the reorganization that occurred last year. So everybody's general administration costs went up. It has a more significant impact on those departments in which the cost allocation plan determines that more general administration time is spent focusing on certain departments. So you see higher amounts in police, fire, and public, public works, public services. So that's why it's a little bit more apparent. It's the same dollar amount driving it, but it's a little bit heavier weighted because of that. And as well as the increase in the liability premium as a result of the self-insurance allocation has also increased. So it's really, you just notice it more in the public services department because overall, there wasn't any other change in the budget, whereas in some of the other departments where it was significant, it kind of gets eaten up by some of the other changes.
Thank you.
Irene, anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Yeah?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I do have one. But it's in water supply. Are you covering?
Yes, everything.
I just want to be, one of the goals is to continue to implement water conservation programs, and I just want to make sure we're still doing the lawn begone program?
Yes, you are correct.
And then, the washing machine rebate program and the toilet program?
Correct. All of those programs are included in our budget proposal for next year. There's no reduction in any water conservation program for next year.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
It's empty. I thought I just scared things up a little.
As far as administrative engineering, I just, this is a general question as far as the traffic safety. Is it just supporting the traffic safety and safety, is it just supporting the traffic safety and parking committee? Or is there, I mean, does the engineer actually have a directive to look at the community and possibly make suggestions to traffic issues?
Our engineering division is responsible for traffic engineering. That really mean overall technical review of the safety in our right-of-way. How is really implemented is a health FTE. Actually, Tina Shing is the traffic engineer for the city, and basically half of her time is allocated to dysfunction. Besides supporting the traffic safety and advisor committee, also she is dealing with all of the complaints, working in coordination with the police department, following up on any concern raised by any residents in the city, and making a decision and recommendation what follow-up action should the city take.
Thank you. Couple of things, I'm assuming that we're anticipating a meeting to talk about the streetlight improvements that are proposed?
It is my understanding that it's our intent to discuss this upcoming Wednesday evening, actually. We'll be subcommittee meeting first, and then the city manager's intent is to have a full, a presentation to the city council following that.
And then lastly, on every, nearly every division, you say monitor and implement a vigorous training program. So what is, I mean, for you to put that into every single division, it just seems like you've got something planned, so if you can elaborate on that.
Thank you very much for pointing that out. I emphasize so much in each division manager that I didn't really see the need to even mention that everybody else mentioned already. Based on many changes in the employee base in the department, very new, high number of new employee, is, was necessary for us to develop a very comprehensive training program. And focusing on OSHA mandatory training needed for the department, and based on that schedule, we've developed a three-year training program for each function of the department. And working together with the HR department, and based on that schedule, is a special focus for the next few years, implementing that detailed training program. And what you see included in each division budget, the impact of that, the cost associated with that increase in training.
I was just taken by everything, it was vigorous.
I did just show.
Versus a non-vigorous.
I don't want to bore you with that, but this is the detailed training program for three years.
Look at you.
But if you want to study, I really welcome you, and I will share with any of you if you have the desire.
Then you can do that individually. Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Chair. Since this is a large and important department, I had quite a few questions, but some of them, and what I'm going to do in this particular department, Connie, I'm going to put it down to, an email, forward it to you. But one was about staff training, so we got that out of the way, because I noticed that was everywhere, too, mandatory. So I was wondering, this time it was mandatory last year, it was not, so I didn't know what had transpired. It's just through the, some of the various divisions, not on all line items, but I'm seeing the exact same verbiage, the exact same dollar amount for every description, and that's now been for the last couple of years. So those are the, some of the items, there's a couple other incidental things that I was going to check on the professional development, it has the same verbiage, but it went up 500, meaning if it was one department and five mid-managers, it went up, so, from last year. So that's the kind of stuff that I was going to put forward, trying to understand what was spent last year exactly in the line item, if it is repetitive and we have this particular need, I just want to understand it better. So I will be forwarding that.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you, Claire.
Thank you very much.
Who is the new guy?
Fresh meat.
Look at how they sit up front. Hi, David.
Hi there.
You have to get used to him.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, I'm pleased to be here this evening to give you an overview of the Community Development Department's activities and proposed budget for this coming fiscal year. The Community Development Department has 11 budgeted positions, has a budget of about $2.1 million, and is comprised of two divisions, a planning division and a building inspection and code enforcement division. The planning division has a number of key responsibilities. Those key responsibilities include processing of private development applications, environmental review for public and private projects, and long-range planning. And when I say long-range planning, I'm talking about maintaining and preparing your long-range planning documents, like the city's general plans, specific plans, and zoning code. The other division, the building and code enforcement division, has a number of responsibilities. The key responsibilities include building plan check and inspection services and code enforcement efforts, all code enforcement efforts. As far as this year, some key accomplishments have been for the planning group, the adoption of the transit corridors plan. Of course, this effort has been in conjunction with a variety of departments and the city's decision-makers, but is a key milestone for the community. In addition, the planning division has worked with other departments and the decision-makers to select a developer for a select service hotel at the city-owned property at the crossing. As far as the building and code enforcement division, the building and code enforcement division has worked with the city attorney's office to identify about 24, about two dozen, key code enforcement cases that have not been closed over time. They've been open, outstanding code enforcement cases, very challenging cases, and the code enforcement staff, along with the city attorney's office, has worked on these code enforcement cases, and I'm pleased to say that many, perhaps as many as 18 of the 24 cases, have either been closed or there's been significant effort toward closing those cases. As far as day-to-day operations for the building and code enforcement group, I'd like to give you an idea of some of the day-to-day operations and what that means in terms of numbers. This year, year-to-date, this fiscal year, our building division has issued over 1,200 building permits, the valuation is over $42 million, and the fees collected over $1.2 million. As far as inspections, our building inspectors, we have two building inspectors in our department. The building inspectors, year-to-date, have done combined over 7,000 building inspections this year. And in terms of code enforcement, 867 cases this year, this fiscal year, have been opened, and of the 867 cases, 824 of those cases have been closed. So there's been significant effort in the code enforcement area as well. As we look forward and prepare our plan for this coming fiscal year, 2013, 14, we're looking at a number of goals and objectives, and those goals and objectives include the following. For the planning group, we're really looking at the next step in terms of the transit corridors plan. We're looking at implementing the transit corridors plan. What does that mean? A key requirement to do that will be facilitating bringing forward a citywide vote to consider amending ordinance number 1284 to look at allowing for taller buildings, increased residential densities, and above-ground parking garages within the transit corridors plan area, which is about 150 acres. And also completing the ongoing comprehensive update to our zoning code. And with that comprehensive update, the transit corridors plan would be brought into the zoning code and allow for its full implementation. Other areas of work for the planning group include looking at the select service hotel. Now, a developer has been identified to do that project, but the next step will include doing the environmental review for the select service hotel and processing the planning approvals that will be required to actually construct that hotel. In addition, as we know, we have a large number, fairly large number, of vacant and underutilized properties within the community. A key goal, a key objective of our staff will be to work with other departments to proactively promote the economic development and redevelopment of those properties by working directly with those property owners and their representatives. In the area of the planning, I'm sorry, in the area of the building group and code enforcement group, there's another set of building codes, the 2013 building codes, that need to be adopted and be put in place for use as of January 1, 2014. So toward the end of this year, we'll need to adopt the 2013 California building codes with local amendments. We'll also want to continue to work with our code enforcement group and the city attorney's office to address those yet remaining and outstanding code enforcement cases that have been longstanding and challenging for the community, really focus on those and try to get those closed. As far as our budget, the budget that's going before you, there are a number of areas that we're bringing to your attention in terms of a proposed service level enhancement, or I'd like to note in terms of a budget notation. Even though the redevelopment agency here is long gone at this point, we no longer have the tool of redevelopment agency, we still have many of the needs and requirements that the redevelopment agency was used for. We still need to redevelop blighted properties. We still need to address our affordable housing needs within the community. We have had the benefit of a redevelopment and housing manager within the Community Development Department. The needs in this community continue for that position. We're proposing, as part of our budget, that that position be reclassified to a long-range planning manager. The key task, the key responsibilities of that position would be to promote and work with property owners, to redevelop key properties that are underutilized in the community, to work with our staff and the other departments to maintain our long-range planning documents such as our general plan, our zoning code, and our specific plans, and to work within our department and across departments to expand the use of geographic information systems and other beneficial technologies. Those would be key areas of responsibility. And you'll notice this proposed reclassification in the proposed service level enhancement portion on page A2 of your budget document. Also on that page, you'll notice that we're requesting $25,000 to complete our comprehensive zoning code update. We found that in the original appropriation, funds were not appropriated for the needed and required SEQA, Environmental Quality Act, review for the zoning code update. So the additional $25,000 will be needed to do the SEQA review for that document, that project, and to complete that project. Both in this fiscal year and our proposed goals for the coming year, as well as some highlights of our proposed budget. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any of your questions. Thank you.
Questions? Michael, Rico?
Just too quick. You already alluded to working on some of the vacant lots or properties in town, I appreciate that. I also would appreciate periodically, whatever my colleagues think, but periodically us getting an update, even if it was within the agenda, doesn't have to be maybe a presentation to save time, as, because we always get from residents, what's happening with?
Sure.
You know, and so, and you'd be surprised, it kind of goes, peaks and valleys as far as when it gets asked, but it would be nice to know, leave the faith. There's a, there's a great one that everybody's always asking, the old theater. So if we could periodically be updated, I know you gave an updated overview to the planning commission.
Right.
And I think that's exactly what I'm referencing. That information would be great for us to know, so when we get the phone calls. The other question is, is do we also have, can somebody, do we have permits online? Can you go online to ascertain permits through the city of San Bruno?
Not online, you can come into the department. You can go online to obtain the applications, but in terms of processing those, you need to bring those in or send those in.
But we do have those downloaded and available to be pulled, printed, and then brought in to save time?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. David, welcome to your first hearing.
Thank you.
And I was, what I said previously, it's like, I think it's very ambitious what the department is doing, especially planning. You've got a piece in a lot of things, not only Glendale, but also the hotel, the grade set, everything, and then wanting to do long-range planning now. Do you have enough people? I mean, my concern is that, and I can appreciate your, you know, your goals and accomplishments and working closely with applicants, you know, making sure that you get, deal with them early on, and building is maintaining to a, you know, a schedule and turning permit projects around and everything. And I got to say, San Bruno is one of the few cities that I work in this county that have pretty much full hours to, you know, counter hours. I go all over and I have to check every single time I go, is that when are they open? There are some towns that are only open two hours. Our neighbor south is open two hours in the morning, and that's it. You know, I don't know what they do during the afternoon, but, yeah. Strike that. I didn't name the city, did I?
No.
But I'm just, I do have a concern, it's my profession and everything, I mean, the economy is picking up. You're going to get a lot more traffic coming down on the counter and everything, and I just hope that there is, and especially planning staff, you know, because, you know, things are getting more complicated and stuff, and we've got guidelines now, and so they need to, they need to be sort of guided, you know, through the process. So dazzle me with that you've got the staff and you've got the, you know, the people to be able to anticipate, and also do all these great things that you say that you're going to be doing.
Well, we need to monitor the activity, and you've got a good point about a pickup in the economy. So as the economy picks up, we're going to need to carefully monitor that to make sure that we can respond to our customers in a timely manner. Right now, I think we can do that, we're doing a good job at that. And I appreciate the acknowledgement about the counter hours. We're open eight to five, we provide full service all day long. Not many communities do that in this area. We do that, San Bruno does that, and we'll continue to provide that level of service, but we will monitor to make sure that we provide excellent customer service. If we find that the activity levels are picking up and we're getting behind, we will certainly report that to the city manager and discuss any sort of adjustments or augmentations. Right now, though, based on our current staffing levels and proposed, as indicated in the budget, proposed budget, I'm comfortable with that. I do believe, though, as the economy picks up, we'll need to monitor that and perhaps make an adjustment or adjustments.
Because I believe I made a comment in previous hearings to say, we're still open eight to five, and if you, if it means possibly proposing to, you know, cut back the count hours so that staff can get things done, you know, at their desks, you know, that would be welcome, because I don't know any other town that is, well, I guess there are a couple that are open eight to five, but they have larger staffs too.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, just to follow up, Ken has a great point. I actually have some information on the other cities, and it amazes me that you can call, because you have an inspection in the afternoon, and then the response you get from that city is, well, you can need to call between eight and nine, and I can't tell you it's between 1:00 and 4:30 at some point. Well, I want San Bruno to also, as customer service, I want it to be known as easy to deal with, not noted as, gosh, I hate when you have to go pull a permit or go down there.
Right.
And I'm not saying we are, but as Ken alluded, and he's correct, many of the cities, it's it's Fridays they close at 11:00. Mondays and Wednesdays are only open for this window. And I know it depends upon their staffing level, too, but as far as a city of our size, our staffing level with the counter hours that we have is pretty impressive.
It is.
And so if you compare it to the other neighboring jurisdictions and municipalities, it is not even comparable. So when it does pick up, and it seems like it will, then I want to make sure we're also able to hit inspections, we're able to have the customer service on the phone, we're able to have permits pulled if necessary, and they find it a reasonable and a, shall we say, for whatever it's worth, an enjoyable experience when they come into City Hall.
Anyone else? Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Getting real close here, so if there's no major objections, we're gonna stay and finish it up.
Another newbie.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. It's my honor to present to you the proposed fiscal year 1314 Community Services budget on behalf of the 34 and a half talented men and women that make up the full-time staff and countless numbers of hours of part-time staff as well. As the council probably recalls, in last year's budget, we brought forward a reorganization that essentially created two divisions. The first division is that of the Recreation Services Program, Parks Maintenance and Building and Facilities, and the second division is the Library Services and Senior Services Divisions. And I'd like just to mention that Danielle Brewer and John Aliter here with me this evening in case I need assistance in answering any questions that you might have. With regard to accomplishments in the current fiscal year or fiscal year 2012-13, we have some pretty noteworthy ones. We were able to expand the sports program for both adults and for the youth at Lions Field, partly because of the improvements at Lions Field and also because of the outreach that we've had throughout the year at school sites. We were able to expand the ACES program through the additional delivery of the program at Bel Air Elementary School, and the After School Adventures program at both Parkside Middle School and John Muir School. We continue to maintain city parks and facilities at the highest level possible and respond as quickly as possible to both internal and community concerns. Sometimes we do that more effectively than others. We know we still have some challenges with the restrooms at City Park. We also were able to enhance existing programs such as contract classes for all the age groups, including the senior center, as well as expand storytime attendance at the library. And we're pleased to tell you, we're still calculating the numbers, but we anticipate ending the current fiscal year at a cost recovery level in excess of 75 percent. With regard to the upcoming fiscal year, so fiscal year 2013-14, one of the things that we will be mindful of, and actually will be working with the school district on later this month, are the restructured program and user fees at the San Bruno Park School District for use of the facilities that we program at. We'll also be bringing forward to the city council for its consideration within the next month or two, and adopt a park facility program to partner with the community on maintaining at the highest level possible, community facilities and parks, something that the Community Services Department will be working on largely over the next year, will be supported in the citywide initiative to celebrate the city's centennial. The council will probably note that there's been an increase in the part-time wages, which we're happy to explore and provide more detail on as needed. These part-time wage increases are offset by revenues and are largely for the ACES program, as well as the After School Adventures program, aquatics, facility rentals, and the summer camp program. We've also been able to grow contract class participation and hope to continue to do that and try to be resilient and responsive to community interests and needs in that regard. And one of the other things that the council will be talking about tomorrow night, as well as perhaps this evening, is the continued evaluation of the approach for maintaining the newly renovated Posey Park as well as the Medians along San Bruno Avenue and the El Camino. Last but not least, on the dollar side of it, for the Recreation, Parks and Facilities Division, you'll note on page H9 that we've actually been able to decrease the general fund assistance in proposed fiscal 14 by about $65,000. With regard to the Library and Senior Center Division, we, you'll note a small increase in the Peninsula Library System fee under contract services, largely for mobile application and internet bandwidth support, and also for a program which I know the council is familiar with, but I'd just like to reintroduce briefly, and that's the Discover and Go program, where you can essentially take your library card out of the building and out of the PLS system and into museums throughout the nine Bay Area counties. Some years ago, the Contra Costa County Library System developed what's called the Discover and Go program, where online you can get movie, or excuse me, museum tickets and cultural activity tickets. They're limited in the number that you can download, but they're, it's a very robust program, and so I'd encourage not only the council but the community to take a look at that again. The council probably will also note that there's a supplemental budget request for books and materials costs in the library program budget, and this is to absorb cost increases, which have been fairly dramatic over the last few years, as well as just to maintain a robust collection in the electronic children and adults collections. Also on the number side, the council will note that the culture, that the art, let me try that again, that the Culture and Arts Commission appropriations have moved into the library budget specifically for three things. The Centennial Art Project at the, at the level of $75,000, when we bring the ultimate approval forward for the council, that number will become refined, as well as for programming, Shakespeare in the Park and the movie series in the park this summer. We continue to work with the Nutrition Site Council to define the joint partnership to support the delivery of seniors programs, and we'll have that wrapped up in fiscal year 14. And last but not least, although this transitions a little bit into the CIP budget, which the council won't be reviewing until fiscal, until July, and to Councilmember Ibarra's question a little bit earlier, we will be working on the marquee sign to remove the parapet portion of it and create structural stability around just the reader board section of it, preserving that in place and making sure that it's safe but still a community asset. And then in the CIP budget, which the council will review in a month or so, there'll be a proposal for a new marquee sign, but because it's within the Caltrans sphere of influence, it will require a permitting process through them and some time actually, because it's in conjunction with the El Camino Real, and because it's visible from the El Camino Real. So we'll do that as quickly as possible, and we'll be bringing that program forward for your consideration, probably next month. So Danielle, John and I are happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? Irene?
I was curious about, on page H29, it has the revenue for the senior center, and it's really gone up remarkably from 2010-11. Do we, do we have an idea why?
So the revenue, as it's shown on this page, includes both the grant assistance that we receive through the Area Agency on Aging, which can fluctuate from year to year, so that is one section that has increased. If you look back at the 2010-11 budget, it was $90,000.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the $5,000 above that.
Oh, you're getting department revenues.
Department revenues, $5,000, and then $29,000, and then $27,000, and then $32,000.
And that is attributable to the fact that, two years ago? About two years ago, the city started charging rent to the Nutrition Site Council for the use of the senior center for bingo, so that equates to $24,000 annually.
Okay. That, I was curious about that. And then, on your goals, on page 34, one of the goals had to do with partnering with the San Bruno PTA Council to offer summer schools, and said the status, the program was evaluated and it was determined not to move forward. Was there a particular reason?
Yes, that project, we were approached by the PTA Council because of the homework center being developed, and they wanted to do a sort of summer loss program where the students, you know, lose some of the learning.
Yes.
And they were hoping to do a summer school program. We were approached, and the discussion we had at that time was that if they wanted to bring that to the library, we would be happy to try to work on that with them, but they did not have any funding mechanism in order to bring that to the library for that period of time. We did, we had remained open to that, but the, because there was a lack of funding source for them, they, they have sort of put that project on the shelf for the time being, until such time as they are able to kind of work to get some more funding that they could bring that to the library.
So I don't understand what kind of funding they would need, if they would charge the students X amount for a summer school program, are they looking not to charge them?
Their idea was it was not going to be of charge. They wanted it to be free. And they wanted to do a very robust program using, bringing in a teacher, hiring a teacher for the summer, developing a kind of curriculum, and using a particular resource called the Khan Academy to help them to do that over the summer. So it was primarily the personnel costs, and they were also talking about bringing in meals, and it was a fairly
The best, yeah.
Complex program. And we were, and we were, we were interested in working with them, but it didn't, between their search for funding and not being able to find it in our, you know, ability to provide just our homework center during only the school year, we weren't able to bring that forward with them. They have not brought it forth anywhere else at this time. I think they are still interested, but we haven't really heard from them in some time about, about that.
Okay. It's a shame, because it's a program that would be very necessary. Do you think you might suggest to them a smaller pilot-type program and maybe help look for funding, or suggest they look for funding, like from Artichokes or from other, some kind of thing like that?
And we have had that conversation with them.
Yeah, okay.
One of the things I will add in is that we still will be able to do, I think, some help this summer. The, the summer lunch program for schools is actually being held at Allen this year, and so those students will be able to have a meal at Allen, and we are actually coordinating with the people at that program so that if they want library services or you want to coordinate the library services with the meal times, we will be able to do that. So there will be some ability to kind of help in that way.
Okay. That's good. And then, on page, oh, I'm sorry, did I?
Okay.
Okay. On page 43, you're talking about the Skyline Activity Center. Let's see. I think, is mine in the right place, wait a second. Oh, it, well, it mentions it, and then it talks about, I guess that's a capital improvement, something we'll be looking at, what to do with it, and, okay. Then, just, I know this is one of those little picky things, but, or, they talk about, on your very first goal, you talked about replacing the outside wooden benches. Have you looked at not replacing them with wood, but using the plastic fiber, whatever that stuff is?
Well, the current benches are, it's the deck.
Yes.
And then the benches are attached to the railings of the deck.
Yes.
So in order to do that, we wouldn't be able to do it with the plastic, because it just wouldn't look right. But if the, if that's the wish, we could look into doing plastic benches, like the park benches, are you talking about, the blue ones?
Well, there's, the blue ones. No, no, I'm talking about, it's, and it's not really plastic, it's, yeah, it's a fiber board, it's recycled.
Okay.
And some of them look actually like wood.
Yeah, we can look into using that material for longer lasting.
Because you never have to, and you never have to restain it, and it's waterproof, so something to look at. And I think that was all I had for that.
Yeah. There was, there was a mention of a, an adoptive
Adopted park, an adopted facility.
Okay. So is that going to be sort of much involved with asking the community or organizations to help with some of the refurbishments, some of these things that are listed here?
We've had some interest from not only community groups but residents who want to assist the city in preserving and maintaining spaces, and we don't really have a structured program or means or vehicle for them to do that, and that's something that we've been working on for the last several months, and finally we'll have something to present to the council this summer.
Well, and that's fine. I mean, I just don't think we need, you know, a major, you know, program or whatever. I know, you know, speaking for what the Lions Club did, you know, the communication came through, and it just happened to be a certain guy that brought it to the, to the club, and from that, we began rolling and said, we can do this, and, you know, save the money, save the city some money. There are other projects that are probably even smaller that, you know, that individuals and families can, you know, can undertake, too.
Precisely, to your point, Councilmember Ibarra, what we want to do is not in a complex way, in a fairly streamlined way, put something into place so easily understandable to the participant in the city about what needs to happen to facilitate that.
Yeah. And just talking about, you know, what I brought up earlier about engaging the community, this is, this is the department that engages the community the best, and this is what we see, this is what we're well-known for, not that we're not for any other, you know, departments, police, fire, you know, streets and all that stuff, but this is where our residents play and enjoy themselves, and I just think that it's great that we're expanding, and great, I think it's great that we had some foresight in the past to bring it to the schools and take care of the schoolchildren and everything, but I think we can do more. I think we can still do more, and we need, maybe that, your department takes the lead in engaging all of these organizations and just have some big powwow and say, these are things that we need and everything, you know, what is your interest, what's your I understand we're geared to doing programs and studies and all this stuff, and then gets, you know, goes through one commission, and the commission puts their stamp of approval, and it's gotta come to the city council and all, eh, yeah, just get it out there as easy as we can. And I guess my last comment, I said, I didn't, is the senior bus okay?
The senior bus is okay. In fact, Danielle and I rode around town in it about two weeks ago with the Park and Recreation Commission. It's more than okay. It's perfect.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Lee had already sat down, so that's maybe why I'm timing this one. Just at the senior center, and this comes up, and Ken's probably heard it on occasion, just the appliances in the kitchen. Are they
Sorry, thanks for
Yeah. Are they perfect?
No. I answer that question.
Are they perfect?
Okay, that's loaded.
Yeah.
What's the current status of the appliances and how are they operating?
The appliances are actually functioning fine. They're, seem to be functioning according to their lifespan, and most of them are in the, sort of the middle of that. I think what you might be referring to is there was some concern or questions about the oven at some point earlier on. What we determined, though, after some research by staff, was that the, number one, the number of service calls were actually quite few. There were some standard maintenance issues that were taken care of by facility staff that were not really repairs, they were just simply ongoing maintenance. And then we did evaluate, you know, it's used by so many people, and not all of them are aware of how it functions properly, and so once we learned kind of what some of the concerns were, we talked to staff, and they were able to tell me that it has been functioning fine for a few months, and what we decided to do is that if there is any issues that seemed to crop up, you know, I only heard about the issues at the same time others did, so
Three minutes.
That's, I know. And that's a good thing. So they're functioning fine, and, but we are, I do keep an eye on how things are going and if there are repair calls, so that if there is some, something that's not functioning properly, that we do address it if we need to. I will say, I did talk to staff and volunteers and all the folks that were concerned about this, and they all agreed that we would kind of keep an eye on things, and if there was any change in that, that we would address it then.
And Irene mentioned this, and maybe, maybe I didn't hear the answer, I apologize. It was on Skyline Activity Center, and I know the items have been recycled, or that was, it became a storage facility, let's be blunt. So, but as far as, is there something looking forward for that facility? As far as, obviously, use of old classes, it used to be rental, then even in my day, stopped getting to be rented out, but is there something in the foreseeable future about the facility itself?
I believe we'll be bringing that forward in the CIP budget.
Beautiful. And then, I'm gonna just touch on one other thing. Anything else, I'll forward to city manager. My meeting with the school district in regards to the use agreement, and I guess, based on what happens, not only with the field usage, but with our programs, is where I guess I have a concern. A concern in this A concern in the sense that it can change as far as the costs that we are asking for folks to sign up for, the level of service that we can provide or to the numbers that we can offer it to. And how fast do you think, this is again, crystal ball, can we rebound or adjust to whatever may come out? Because I know obviously it's in Midway, they postponed some of it until October, that was more an aspect of it the last meeting. So anyway, I know it's, it's a, a lot of variables.
It is still a convoluted issue at best. There is not any structure at this point behind the school district's objective with regard to how they want to weave this through the agreement that we have with them. There was a number that was presented at the school district meeting, I believe it was $46,000 that they had as a target, it was either $43,000 or $46,000. But they backtracked a little bit from that number and so it's not entirely clear what their objective is, nor is it clear to me whether their objective is to pass through some sort of use fee directly to the city and have us figure out how to spread it among the users, or whether they intend on creating a specific fee structure for the different types of uses. That conversation, Danielle and I met with the school district a few days before they had that district meeting, the, and there was some talk about just weaving it into the agreement, renegotiating the agreement, whether they would need to provide us with cancellation of the agreement, which is a six-month timeframe, or whether they would simply adopt a fee structure that would then be a pass-through. We will be meeting with them later this month, hopefully to better understand what their objectives and intentions are. We had, Danielle and I had proposed, their initial intention was to implement the fees effective July 1. Impractical from our point of view. We were able to persuade them to defer that until October at the soonest. Frankly, now that we're for all intents and purposes in July, we need to weave that into the activity guide, whatever ends up happening with those fee increases. I think realistically, we're looking at early '14. But we want to talk with them and better understand their objectives and see what happens. We don't understand the ramifications of the fee increase either for our programs.
Yeah, and I think that they would probably say that the reason they postponed it was because they had a full house, nothing the city did. But also, in the dollar amount, I had been told some dollar amount too, when I spoke to one of the members that serves on this school, school subcommittee with Michael and I, made it very clear to me that there was not that number. So, I don't know that we're all on the same page, which has been a concern of me, because obviously we have the users specifically in the athletic fields that do a lot of efforts, a lot of work, that's been one of my concerns I brought up to the school board member, is that you have in essence at some fields that they put a lot of love, sweat and tears into and finances to, to get it up to par, and now they may get charged. There's also the other aspect that we are getting money too, from the per, per person, per field, per season. So, it's a, it's a bigger complex picture. My, my worry is that it's been postponed till October 1st, which is not that far off, and that we have a, we need to know what's happening because I would hate to see the programs affected without, without all of us not being at the same table. I've already talked to Connie about, Michael and I are meeting with that school board member subcommittee, they are open to that idea. She said it would be with Dr. Hut, myself, Michael, Connie and the two school board members, Prescott and Sanchez. So, but I, I think we need to even elevate it higher because I think, I get a lot of questions and there's a lot of concerns and I'm just worried and Connie and I talked about, about our programs. I think not much more of the fields, but the programs could really be affected. And again, we're in June and October is around the corner.
And, and Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Medina, one of the other things, even if we don't have complete information, when we bring back the fees and charges schedule, which I think is going to happen roughly around the time that we bring CIP or shortly thereafter, October, we should certainly know by then what these increases look like, I hope.
Just the rest of, I'll just go. Michael and you?
All right. Ken? If I could just add, talking about the adopt program, but also want to get a better understanding about facility maintenance and how that process is. A lot of these things are, you know, are emergency situations or they're, you know, just ongoing things that I think, it's my understanding, we probably don't utilize our local businesses enough. And I think there's, there's got to be, just like, like a homeowner, there's a trust factor, there's, there's a reputation factor, is that you're going to probably get a better response and better service from a local business because they have a reputation of holding, they're around, they're, they're here versus a bid process where you're going to get somebody from out of the area that may, let's just say it, lowball and then hit you, hit you up with extras later on. So, I'd like to see what, you know, what changes we can have, what sort of policies we can establish for, for all the facilities and, you know, anything that's, you know, that city staff needs, needs improvements on. Thank you.
Thank you. Cable.
Just for clarification, I'd like to thank PAC for that slide. That is not the cable office in 1910. Our business has been around for 42 years, but I get the nexus, the entertainment and cable. Thank you very much. Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, Al Johnson and I are here tonight to provide you a brief overview of the cable television budget and the local origination budget for this, for this coming year. First, I'd like to outline a couple of highlights from this past fiscal year, based on our goals of last year. In order to better serve customers, the inventive service outage and enhance after-hours policy was established whereby cable TV technicians will respond for service outages, of course, but even if all TVs are off in your house or your phone service is not working, and it is not the result of a billing issue. So staff is also considering safety and efficiency for the more robust response. So its second technician was also placed on full standby, so in the event there's a need for assistance in the field, in the dark, in the backyards, this is, we have a resource in place. The second person also is able to respond to channel issues, the head end or some global issues. And our team works in coordination with the 24-hour technical support team, Z Corp Tech Supports. Another highlight on the marketing side, 49 new subscriptions were added using the fixed pricing campaign you approved two years ago. It's coming towards the end of it next year, but we did run it for six months this year. In addition, 42 internet subscriptions were added with the current video, customers taking advantage of the internet service offer. Other campaigns garnered about 87 new customers. Now, the success of these promotional campaigns is one of the reasons the staff has seen a slowdown in video service losses as subscribers come back to us from our competitors. While these customers were derived from campaigns and they seemed like small numbers, but we did add over 1,000 new customers this past year. We also lost, you know, a number of customers as well, but we, we had 1,002 installs in the last year without promotional campaigns. So those are customers that heard about us, their other needs that we, we had. So as part of the marketing effort, staff had a booth at a flea market, we sent letters out to businesses in the Bay Hill Business Park. We ran a half dozen direct mail campaigns for various products and services. We continued heavy play of our retention commercials, you may have seen those on there, touting San Bruno Cable and our, and our good service. We continued the dish buyback program. In fact, we have it in full swing at Peninsula Place, they're redoing their balconies and removing the dishes, so when they remove them, I've got one in my office right now, someone already brought it to me, so we have a dish, dish buyback program, we're getting those, some of those customers back. We have a refer a friend campaign still running, which you've seen in Focus a few times. And we did recently hire a salesperson for direct marketing to businesses and we'll also use that person to go to some of these MDUs as well and make sure the rochures are there. Staff has been doing that now, but we're going to use this person for that as well. As I said before, slide please, this is the national averages of cable subscriber losses. And just to show you that the department has seen a slowdown, as you know, in basic video subscriber losses for a couple of years, at about half the losses in previous years. To be clear, this is not only a San Bruno cable phenomenon, but an industry-wide issue whereby overall video subscriptions to cable are dropping while, next slide please. The internet subscriptions are growing and these are our internet numbers here and the growth that you can see from our service. And this is, again, industry-wide. Currently, San Bruno Cable serves 8,000 homes in San Bruno and over 6,500 of those are internet subscribers, paid internet subscribers. Staff continues to pursue the business sector and has added clients such as e24.com, which is a place where you can go online and get restaurant food and have it delivered anytime, day or night, if the restaurant is open. And American Workwear was recently added. These are dedicated internet subscribers and the salesperson, again, as I mentioned, is in the area to garner more of these types of clients. So I can have the first slide again, or, yeah, there you go. Staff is recommending a system rebuild over the next two years to stem the occasional outages caused by aging equipment and to greatly improve performance and reliability of the city's system. Rebuild options range from basic replacement of field equipment to a combination of field and headed equipment replacement, or even a more forward-thinking project of building a fiber-to-the-home system, which would eliminate all field equipment and all field power requirements. Staff is evaluating and researching these options for your consideration. Al has spent quite a bit of time doing that in the last several months and we will present them to you soon as part of the capital improvement project. With an upgrade to the infrastructure of the cable enterprise, the city could offer more channels and services, faster internet speeds, higher quality video, we could win back subscribers, all with a better measure of reliability and performance. These improvements are all being considered with the same objective, to offer the state-of-the-art services and provide excellent customer service and products at a competitive price, which is our mission. The cable revenue projections do include a 5% rate increase to begin to address the capital costs for the upcoming year. As you're aware, San Bruno Cable has not had a rate increase since 2011 as costs were covered without one. Council will need to consider this possibility in the near future. This coming fiscal year, our continuing goal is to grow subscriber basis for all services using direct sales mailers to both residential and business non-subscribers and continue with the retention campaign via video advertising on cable channels. Staff recognizes the ongoing competitive market environment in this industry, especially here in the Bay Area. And the cable enterprise must continue to position itself aggressively serving the business sector as well. In that light, staff is also recommending continuation of the sales effort with a dedicated salesperson to target apartment complexes and to market these commercial services to the business community. Look for more over-the-top services coming from providers such as Fox, NBC and ABC, which enable subscribers to see video on their mobile devices. And look for more hours of video on our video demand program package. And we ordered, we upgraded about 500 hours this, last year. Miriam is the manager of our local origination department. So briefly, our operating budget is funded by the city council approved rate of $1.90 per subscriber per month of the basic cable rate to cover most of the generate, operating and personnel cost to provide coverage of the city meetings such as the school board meetings, videotape local events. Staff also produces public service announcements, all the cable TV promotions you see. We have a program for seniors called Senior Moments, glad I remember that. One for the young ones. One for the young ones called Storytime and a program called What's Happening About Town, which has been really well received by viewers.
Who's that gal? Who's that?
She is, she's one of our paid interns that was hired to do video production and she had a propensity to do, you know, on our talent.
Talks a lot and smiles the whole time.
Yes. And she's, and she's gotten really, really good over the, over the period. Anyway, that concludes my presentation. Al and I are happy to, and Miriam are happy to answer any questions you may have tonight or in the coming weeks.
Questions for cable?
I have questions of Miriam now. No, I can, for these, C Manager, I just wanted to, at some point we were also going to get maybe the results of, the overview of the cable department and the consultant's findings, but the others I'll, I'll forward. Or I will call. Camera yourself.
I just have one. We've, we've grown to know how sewers run, how, you know, how wells are operated and things. I'm losing you on cable stuff, on, on internet things and electronics. And I'm just thinking, maybe my colleagues or, or maybe on an individual basis, we can get a little primer on what's, what's out there now because I'm trying to follow, I'm trying to understand and it'd be nice to know better and also be able to say, what is, what are the competitors not, you know, doing and what's, what's, what's coming up? That would be a fun study session or something, wouldn't it?
Maybe.
Well, you're going to have to ask some video stuff, you're going to have to ask some, you know, bells and whistles, you know.
No, Irene and I sit on the subcommittee and, I mean, it's a blast.
We, we, we do tend to have to ask them to say that again. Say it again.
Acronyms and all of them.
Yeah, it's good.
Very interesting, but very complicated. Yeah, as, as everybody knows, smartphones, the TVs, the cable, the Wi-Fi, to all kinds of stuff out there now.
Yeah, it's still exciting.
Ready? Any questions?
Oh, I, I just wanted to comment that I really appreciate all your work in promoting community activities that we do. I know they, Miriam and her team go out and talk to the Operation Clean Sweep people and, you know, all the other things we do and the Posey Parade and the whatever, I can't think of them right now, but all the other things. And I just want people to also know that we show those programs, or they show those programs on Channel 1, but if you can't watch it there, they're also on YouTube. So if you want to see the cute little Boy Scouts talking about why they, why they are cleaning up things, go to YouTube and plug in San Bruno Operation Clean Sweep and there it is. And it's great, so, it's a lot of fun. I really appreciate all you guys do.
Thank you.
All, everyone does, actually.
All right. That's it? We can?
Debt service?
Debt services?
Well, I touched upon that on Thursday nights, I wasn't going to revisit that, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the debt service. Okay, otherwise, this is just the budget recap slide, just to sort of provide an overview of the financials involved with the three major fund types. General fund budget of $34.3 million with supplemental proposals of $302,000. Enterprise funds, total revenue of $36 million and expenditures, operating expenditures of $28 million with the remainder of that coming from the capital program. And finally, a $4.2 million internal service funds budget. So that's sort of the overview and highlights of the budget as it's been proposed. And I would just like to take a minute to thank the budget team and acknowledge the budget team, which consists of Paclyn, our financial services manager, who is one of the primary reasons why we have so much creativity integrated both into the presentation and the budget document. Many of the improvements that you've seen this year, hopefully you view them as improvements, are the result of the hard work of the budget team, but Pac's creativity. Darlene Wong, our accounting manager. And Karen Hong is our new financial services supervisor, her first budget here with us this year. And also finally Jennifer Dianos at the city manager's office, who's spent many hours focusing on the narratives and the goals and objectives and ensuring that there was that follow-through from last year to this year. So the collective effort of those four individuals is, are really the ones that are responsible for this document that's before you tonight.
And yourself.
Mm-hmm. And yourself.
Thank you.
That's good.
Well, thank you all. We got through it quickly. We are a, in, in some respects, a little city, but over the last two and a half years, we've become a national city. But people still have to realize that, you know, you're on the news and we're, we're rebuilding a neighborhood and we're the recipient of a huge disaster. But we still have to sit here and balance our budgets and fill the potholes and trim the trees and do all the things that other cities have to do. So, it's, it's, it's been quite a challenge for everyone, but we really appreciate your efforts. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.